Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We do appear to have a quorum. If you're comfortable, please call the roll.
Walters are the end of Santana. Barbara Harrington McKinney. Carolyn McAndrews.
Present.
Christopher McAhill.
Here.
Eric Paulson.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Randy Udell. Tom Wilson.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, so this quorum, so this meeting is in order. First item of business is approval of minutes from our August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Assuming all board members have had a chance to review those, is there a motion to approve? Chris, thank you. Is there a second? Second, Elder Furman, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes from the August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oh, is no? Chair believes unanimous that if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, it looks on as unanimous. Thank you. I don't believe we have any registered for public comment for items not on the agenda. Looks like that hasn't changed. Are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the board? Seeing none, we will get into, let's just our seven, two, eight, nine, seven, street assessment policy changes. I'm sorry, before we begin that, we have to do our our virtual meetings opening statement from our technical coordinator. Sorry, I just want to skip that. Sorry, Kimberly.
Oops, sorry. There you go. You should hear me now. All right. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video for purposes of quorum and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is, elders, committee members and staff have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Also, please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. Clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the body, please send it to the email on today's agenda. Thank you. And the floor is yours, Chair.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right, now we begin to legislate our seven, two, eight, nine, seven, street assessment policy changes.
Okay, so, thanks. My name's Chris Pedikowski. I'm with the City Engineering Division. And I'm here to discuss our assessment policy update that we've been working on. We had a staff team and also Alder Foster. Had had folks from engineering, TE, transportation, Attorney's Office, Finance, and Alder Foster, who kind of worked, been part of a work group to to help formulate this update. And I've got a few slides to go through to kind of summarize the the major changes. So I'm going to share my screen here. All right, everybody seeing the the slide here, first slide? Okay, great. And just jump right in if there's questions as I'm going along, because I know some of this might be pretty new to some folks. So just feel free to stop and have me clarify anything.
Yeah, so more members just throw your hand up in the participants list and then I'll call you.
So just a kind of a brief outline, I'm going to talk about our current policy as it stands right now and has been for the last fifteen-plus years or so. I'm going to talk about some of the goals we we had in performing our update and what we wanted to put in there. And then I'll show the show the proposal itself and then how it kind of, how the the budget numbers work as part of that. So I think Tom maybe wanted to jump in and kind of give a little background for for some of the the changes here.
Yeah, so I I actually used a slide in a previous presentation, maybe a meeting or so ago. But when you look at this street right here, you can see where literally about a third of the street is being used, you know, for car storage. The main travel lanes are being used by cars as well as bicyclists. When there's a pothole or a pavement repair, you know, that's taken care of by the city. And so all of this transportation really is is being funded by property taxes and the city levy. But then if you just move to the other side of the cars, the sidewalk, well, that that isn't taken care of by the city, right? The 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 property owner actually has to pay for the sidewalk. The property owner has to pay for sidewalk repairs. And it's a little bit uneven, because as as we're going through our complete green streets, you know, pedestrians are at the at the top of the modal hierarchy, meaning that we really want to make sure that those are the facilities that we provide for. Yet, in some ways, you might say that they're disadvantaged by our current assessment system. And it causes a little bit of a resentment for property owners that have to pay for the sidewalk. And it just seems to be incentivizing the modes that we want to discourage and disincentifying the modes that we want to encourage. So that's just my forty-five-second background. Chris, you can go ahead and move on.
All right. Thanks, Tom. So I'll jump right into our current policy to kind of give you a frame of reference for where we're standing right now. We have a certain, certain kind of projects have have a different funding mechanism through the assessments. And I'll go through the the most common ones here. Reconstruction and resurfacing, those are, those are are really common projects for us. A reconstruction is when a a street already has curb and gutter, may have sidewalk, and already has a street that was kind of built by the city once before. And we would just be reconstructing that whole whole street. Resurfacing, obviously, we're we're just kind of, you know, taking off maybe a couple inches of asphalt and putting a couple inches back on. And and these two kinds of projects are are assessed right now similarly, where fifty percent of curb and sidewalk are assessed. So so this property owner, for for its frontage, gets assessed for fifty percent of the curb and fifty percent of sidewalk replacement that's done with the project. The entire rest of the project share is is borne by the by the city. So the next type of project that is somewhat common is a is a what we call a rural-to-urban project, where, and this is a a project where the street was probably built when it was in a neighboring town at some time. It probably just has two lanes of travel, no curb and gutter, no sidewalk. You know, just just essentially, you know, usually about twenty feet of asphalt and that's it. So when when we reconstruct the street, we look to add the curb and gutter to to provide a good drainage. You know, that also usually includes a storm sewer system under the street. We also look to add sidewalk wherever we can and 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 install that. So in those types of projects, the the adjacent property owners are assessed a hundred percent of the curb, so and and four feet of the pavement width. And then a hundred percent of the sidewalk. And we do have a sidewalk reimbursement grant available that that reduces the sidewalk portion down to fifty percent. So so these are, these rural-to-urban projects have been, you know, sometimes they're a little controversial, because these assessments can get a little a little pricey when you add all these these components together. The last major or normal kind of project is a is a whole new street, where that entire hundred percent of that street curb and sidewalk are all assessed to the the property owners. You know, basically, half of the street goes to one side, half the street to the other. This is mostly done by developers. The street, you know, the city is doesn't build a lot of brand-new streets on our own. But but again, you know, mostly, mostly this kind of work is is done in development with new plans. So with the update, here's kind of the, some of the things we were looking to do. I already mentioned the rural-to-urban projects are are fairly, they can be a little pricey when you when you get all those bids together for for all those items. So we were hoping to make those a little bit more affordable, particularly as as costs keep going up. We would, we would like to reduce the number of obstacles or opposition to install new sidewalks and, you know, have a system that, you know, maybe there's, we can't certainly maybe get rid of all opposition, but at least perhaps we could, we could not charge them for the sidewalk and, you know, eliminate that cost, the opposition due to the cost of the sidewalks. Another goal was to try to make assessments more uniform, whether or not your street has existing curb and gutter or sidewalk or not. So, you know, some elders have have rural-to-urban projects, they have regular reconstruct projects, you know, and they they kind of hear from their constituents, you know, why, you know, why, why is my neighbor paying so much more than I, or so much less than I am? And, you know, so we wanted to make it a little more uniform. We want to preserve existing development requirements, so that what we're saying there is, you know, the things that developers have been paying for, we would like to continue for them to pay for. So they're really not not proposing any changes in in that realm. We'd like to preserve a similar amount of revenues, just so that the, you know, the the city's finances, there's not a a big hole that we would have with any kind of policy change. We'd we'd like to, you know, kind of keep, keep our our construction levels at a similar similar amount and and not create any new gaps. And then lastly, try to provide a more reliable estimate for residents. You know, they can, the assessments, right now, the way we do assessments is you get, you get assessed for the actual cost of the bid of the project. And sometimes that can can vary, depending on, you know, the time of year that we we bid it or or, you know, this current situation with the with the, you know, economy. And hopefully, we'd like to make that a little more averaged out or stable, less less volatile. So I'll jump right in now to the proposal. Those were, those were kind of the goals we were looking to do. And so I'll jump right into reconstruction and resurfacing. So if you remember, before we were, we were charging fifty percent of curb and gutter and fifty percent of sidewalk on these kinds of projects. And now what we're looking to do is assess for a hundred percent of ten feet of pavement. So essentially, you know, a width of one travel lane would be assessed to the each each parcel. So the, you know, the parcel here would be assessed for the the frontage of their home or parcel times ten feet in of cross-section of pavement. And I would just point out that, you know, resurfacing costs less than reconstruction, because it's just a couple inches of asphalt versus the entire pavement structure of of pavement and base, stone base. So rural-to-urban, very, very similar, what we're, what our proposal would be. Again, a hundred percent of ten feet of pavement goes to the adjacent parcel owner. A sidewalk and curb would be assessed at a hundred percent, but then curb and sidewalk would be eligible for a hundred percent grants. Similar to how we use the 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 Safe Routes Grants now, we we are able to, you know, provide a fifty percent reduction in assessments to those properties. In this case, this would be, you know, a hundred percent of of grant for those same types of properties. Basically, essentially, single-family homes, duplexes, you know, areas that were developed before coming into the city. And and primarily, like I said, single-family and duplex homes. So in the end, the rural-to-urban, you know, after that grant supplied, the rural-to-urban and reconstruction and resurfacing, it's all all the same. Ten percent, ten feet of pavement in front of in front of the parcel. There's some other notable, pretty notable changes with this. We have our sidewalk repair program that goes around the city. Right now, we we average about two alder manic districts a year and go through and replace defective sidewalk that that we walk and inspect. Right now, those are charged at fifty percent, just like the, you know, on the reconstructions. Those now would no longer have assessments. So if there's a set of criteria that are met, that that would would cause us to replace that sidewalk, we would not charge the assessment. Same with the our city sidewalk and curb repair program. That is kind of a citywide, where we have, you know, there's been pointed out deficiencies to us throughout the city of curb and sidewalk repairs that are needed. We would, we would no longer assess any of those improvements. Driveways, we are proposed to assess the driveways the same as before. So right now, if you get a driveway replaced, you pay fifty percent of that cost. We wouldn't change that. We feel that is a, you know, a direct benefit to only that property owner. And we we're pretty comfortable that 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 can stay the same. I would note that, you know, if they're getting a new alignment due to some dramatic change in in geometry of the street, like we're adding a new multi-use path along the side, you know, those those kinds of driveways, you know, if it's only moving because, you know, we want to add something significant like that, those those would not be assessed. All right, so those are the summary of the major changes. And if there's no question yet, I'll I'll kind of jump into what 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 this means cost-wise. What I did for my analysis was kind of take a look at three years, twenty-seven, eighteen, and nineteen. Right away, when we started this, I noticed, you know, twenty-twenty numbers were a little strange because of the pandemic. And twenty-twenty-one, I didn't even have fully numbers yet when we started this work. So so I focused on these three years. And what I found was, on these types of projects, so reconstruction, rural-to-urban, resurfacing with underground utilities, and then just a simple resurfacing, I got, I found these these averages based on all the projects we did in those three years. You know, reconstructs about an average of thirty, rural-to-urban's about sixty, resurfacing fourteen, and simple resurfacing about three. And what I, one thing I'd like to point out is is some of the volatility in the bids, depending on how complex the project was or when we bid it. You know, there's can be a lot of different numbers getting assessed to the the property owners. You know, recons have been as high as sixty, low as thirteen, rural-to-urban's high as ninety, low as thirty. So this kind of illustrates why we want to kind of try to average it out over years. We felt it was maybe better to, you know, not sock someone with an assessment when they were, you know, circumstances of something that was out of their control, like the the bidding time or 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 something like that. So to try to average it out more over time. So we would propose to set rates at the beginning of year, each year, based upon the previous three weighted years. And based on these these dollars, we would be looking at forty-two dollars a foot for reconstruction for both reconstruction and rural-to-urban. You can see where they, you know, where they were generally with the existing policy. Of resurfacing with utilities and simple resurfacing, propose that eleven, eleven dollars a foot. And so those were the, those were the numbers that, you know, using that ten dollars per, or sorry, ten feet of pavement and average bid costs over those three years, those are kind of the numbers that we that we came came up with. So what does this mean for a typical homeowner? Let's say you have a sixty-foot lot. You know, what kind of street assessments would you, would you be, you know, exposed to if we did a project in front of in front of your house? So right now, reconstructions, you know, they would, on average, they were about eighteen hundred dollars. With the new policy, they'd be about twenty-five hundred. Rural-to-urban, going from thirty-five hundred down to twenty-five hundred dollars per par, or per parcel. A resurfacing stays pretty close to the same at 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 six-sixty. And simple resourcing, simple resurfacing goes up a little bit, about five hundred dollars to six hundred and sixty dollars a foot. So so we're, you know, there's, there's some increases with some some modest increases here, but some real good savings that we're finding with the rural-to-urban projects that we're hoping can, you know, promote, you know, a better opportunity for us to, you know, install that that drainage and that those the walking facilities that we'd like to implement. So I just wanted to point out on this slide, you know, the street assessment's not the only assessment that happens on a project. There's, there's, you know, your driveway costs, your sanitary lateral costs. So so this is kind of a a total that you might find on a on a project with a new policy. So again, forty-five hundred for reconstruction, rural-to-urban, and down to two thousand and six hundred for the two resurfacing. As I mentioned, we wanted to try to keep the policy kind of overall for our whole budget somewhat neutral. And what I did is kind of go through these last three years, tally up all the assessments that we did collect, and try to estimate what the assessments would have been under the new policy. And as you can see here, there's a little bit of a fluctuation, depending on how much, you know, mileage that we we do each year in each of the programs. But over the, over the three years, we're we're getting fairly close that I think, you know, we could, we could, we could work with that and not not have to drastically reduce or expand anything to 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 keep moving along at the same levels. Well, this is one thing that we're thinking of possibly for two thousand and twenty-three is since, since the two thousand and twenty and twenty-one are are kind of, kind of abnormal with the with the pandemic, we're considering maybe instead of using those years to to bump up, use the construction cost index to bump up to to twenty-two numbers. But, you know, I haven't, haven't totally settled on this yet. This is just kind of one thing that I'm I'm thinking might might be appropriate. I think that is the end of my slides. So welcome to open up for questions. And if there's anything I need to clarify, please let me know.
Okay, questions for Chris, or Tom for that matter? Alder Paulson, go ahead, please.
Actually, I have a question for you, just real quick. I have a conflict at five-thirty. If I leave, do we have quorum still?
It looks like we do, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then I have a a real question for Chris. Could you talk a little bit about not just residential parking permits and how that? We talked a little bit about, Tom talked a little bit about on-street parking as a as a use in downtown. Some of the folks bear that cost directly. I don't think anyone gets parking permits out here in District Three. Did that enter into any parts of this conversation about, you know, should should places that are already kind of charging for the parking permits for for that street use in front of it factor into anything?
So one, one thing we we talked about, we didn't talk about the permits in, you know, in any specific specificity, but, you know, one thing that Yang, our our traffic engineer, wanted us to consider was, you know, should the, should the parking space be part of the assessment? And, you know, that, I I personally think that that could be something we could, we could look at, but I I kind of felt like that was a pretty big, dramatic change that we could, we could do, but I think maybe we're not, maybe we're not ready for. Maybe we could kind of take this in in steps. So so I guess to answer your question, we kind of talked about that a little bit, that that space and and the assessments. that, that space and, and the assessments, uh, but not, not changing any of the, the permit. And right now the proposal doesn't, doesn't change any, any permit information. Tom, did you want to add something?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna say that being said, that our, our, our on-street parking policy will need to be revisited. Um, right now, we charge about half of what it costs us to run the program. Um, a lot of the RP-three, um, areas are in housing that was built, you know, kind of prior to cars being a thing, so they don't have a lot of off-street parking. So like, for instance, uh, neighborhoods that are on the peripheral, they, they tend to have a lot of off-street parking. And, um, the on-street parking goes, is relatively vacant, whereas, um, more centrally located ones that, like my house was built in nineteen-twenty-two, so I don't have a lot of o- off-street parking at my house. And so, um, um, that's a, um, that policy needs to be visited and we had attempted to do that a couple of years ago. Um, kind of got put on hold for a little bit, but it's a valid question, so.
Okay, thanks. I don't have a proposal. I just wanted to understand where we were kind of thinking on that. Um.
All right, Alder Foster, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Uh, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the question about the, the sort of parking area. Um, so I mean, I'm someone who generally likes to charge for, uh, car parking, kind of, um, across the board and am excited to be able to take a closer look at our, um, parking policy. In terms of the assessment policy, I think one of the reasons why, um, it didn't really come to mind for me and I, why I think I'd be hesitant to go there is, um, you know, that's sort of part of the, the flex area in the, the kind of complete speed streets, um, nomenclature. And, um, I think it's a really dynamic area that we're, um, there's going to be a lot of attention there and it's sort of one of the ways that we are able to improve, uh, our bike network and connectivity. There's, um, I think as, um, you know, with deliveries and, uh, restaurant, short-term parking needs, et cetera, street cafes, all of these things. Um, I think if we started to charge for that to the, um, adjacent property owners, it would include expectations of access or use, um, to that space. Um, and then if we wanted to change the use maybe from on-street parking to something else, I can imagine, uh, hearing a lot from folks that said they were, they were charged when that was rebuilt. And so now they should have some, um, kind of special entitlement to it. Where the parking permit program, um, is actually generally, um, asked for and supported by the, the nearby residents as a way to, um, limit others' use of that parking space. So, um, definitely in, in favor of looking at ways to fully capture the, the costs of automobile storage, but I think in terms of the assessment policy, um, I, I think it's good to leave that kind of flex zone open, um, and really have it be driven by our, our broader transportation needs and priorities for any given project, so that folks don't think they can just pay for it and then get it to be, um, kind of private car storage.
All right, Alder Paulson, yeah, go ahead, please.
I guess I've got to just respond back to Alder Foster there. Just, um, I guess kind of how I was thinking about it was that if we're going to start charging for the flex space, uh, especially for downtown folks who, who, you, you know, um, the, the flex space in front of the house is almost always filled by someone using it for car storage. Um, and then we're now assessing that back to the property owner. I think that's kind of a, you know, that's going to sit a little weird with folks. Um, whereas maybe out here where, I mean, there's no one parked on the street. No one is using, uh, my street for car storage right now. It's extraordinarily rare that we have that. Um, so paying for the street makes more sense and it's handy when, you know, delivery folks pull up, um, or for the odd time when someone, um, uh, uses it. But mostly it's just because, you know, now it's a place that we can drive on or people can bike on or, or use. So it just, it felt a little different and I'm not sure quite how to capture that. Um, and, you know, I think in, with, where we sell the residential parking permits and certainly I think we need to charge a lot more for our residential parking permits. Uh, they're, they're an incredible bargain, um, uh, right now. Uh, but it just feels like maybe that's somewhere we need to tread a little bit carefully when we start talking about assessing the, that flex area, especially for people who don't use it or because of the way that parking permits work, they rarely are able to use it in front of their house, so.
Yeah, it sounds like we're actually maybe on the same page. So it, just to clarify with the proposal, we wouldn't be assessing that flex space. So we basically, we'd be assessing just the travel lane portion, not, um, what comes outside of that. So that's really the twenty feet in the middle of a street. And streets that have on-street parking on both sides are, you know, often thirty, thirty-two feet of road width. So that flex space in this proposal, like currently and in the proposal would not be assessed at all. Um, just to clarify.
Okay, thanks. Maybe I will bug you about it the next time we are chatting.
All right, Carolyn, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Tom, and thanks, Chris. I have a question, not about the parking or parking permits, but I just want to understand the analysis a little better. So I have a question that, my question sort of starts on slide sixteen around the budget implications. Um, and so we're looking back, right? The analysis covered twenty-seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, and those are good years because they're not the pandemic years and so forth. And there is some question about future costs. Um, but it looks like the impact, like the, what to be revenue neutral depends on the mix of the projects. Is that right? Like,
Very much so, yes.
Like a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. But now my question is, is it helpful to think ahead to the mix of projects you would foresee the city doing to estimate impacts on future budgets? Because I think the board has seen these maps where we have talked about priorities and, and systems and rules, like, you know, heuristics for prioritizing projects. You could almost estimate how much is going to happen and how much people might get assessed. Would that be useful?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, uh, one of the good things about those years was they were, they were also, you know, kind of average output years for us. Um, so these are, these are pretty dependent on the, on the mix. You're, you're correct. And, um, and those, those numbers have been pretty steady for, for quite some time now. So if we were to, um, if we were to, uh, you know, just say we're all doing rural to urbans, um, and, uh, you know, that would certainly, we'd certainly have to, have to take a, take a look at things. Um, but generally these, these costs in general are like, you know, anywhere from like two to maybe five percent of our total costs. So, um, you know, we, we, with the cities largely on the, on the, uh, projects, um, absorbs, you know, almost all the costs. Um, so I don't think if we got too off-kilter, you know, in any one given year, we, we'd really get in too much trouble. But we'll see how it goes. You know, I'll be able to, the way this policy works is we'll be able to set the rates each year. Um, and, 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 and if we're starting to veer off, um, hopefully we can, we can correct as we go. I don't know if that answers your question.
The past, so there's not that variable. The mix changes, but year-to-year, the, the overall system change is relatively consistent. But to the property owner, they would see some change.
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, the, the other thing is, you know, the property owners, they don't really see change because we often don't come and assess your project probably twice in the time that you live there. And maybe some people do, I, it is probably pretty awfully rare. Um, but, but, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
That helps.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, any further questions or comments, feedback? Tom, was this an item we were looking for an approval on at this meeting?
It's just informationally right now. Um, we, we, we plan to go to, uh, Board of Public Works, um, and then any other outreach that we're, we're thinking of, um, and then regroup and, uh, take those comments and, uh, we'll take it from there. If we want to go, go for approvals soon or, or hold off, you know, it's still, still kind of undecided.
Okay, thank you. All right then, last call for questions, comments, feedback. All right, seeing none, we will then move on to, let's just start seven, three, six, four, five, uh, TPPB and DOT work plan review. Thanks again, Chris.
Yeah, I, I, I think I just, uh, I didn't raise my hand quick enough on that. I think the intent is to be able to use those assessments for the, the next batch of projects. So, so that, that's good, I think. Um, okay, I'm going to go ahead and, and share my screen. Um, um, and, um, just make sure that my, uh, slides are advancing. I'll, I'll tell you when I change the slides. Um, this will talk a little bit about, uh, the TPPB responsibilities and accomplishments and how they relate to the DOT work plan. Um, I just want to also acknowledge that while we're going to talk about what the TPPB mission is and what it has done, you know, there are some, um, some that would like to, you know, some members of TPPB and the TC and, and others that may want to the city to consider combining the TC and the TPPB. And I'm just going to say that, that, that desire and that discussion exists. Um, but I'm not going to cover it so much in this slideshow. I'm just going to, um, look back at four years and see what's, uh, accomplished. Um, uh, according to the ordinance, the purpose of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board is to consider and address transportation policy and planning issues pertaining to each element of the city's transportation system, including bicycles, bus, freight, automobile traffic, parking, pedestrian, street, curb, right-of-way use transit and other transportation elements as may be identified by the common council by ordinance or resolution. So, um, in contrast to the, um, to the TC, you know, the, what the ordinance gives as the purpose for the TC, uh, this one is relatively short and is very specific on, on the policy and the planning side. Um, when we look at the, um, the, uh, the initial, basically it's about, been about four years that the TPPB has been meeting. Uh, for about, uh, a year and a half, uh, the TPPB met one time a month on average. And then, um, I guess now for about a year and a half, um, it's met about two times per month on average. Um, so uh, that's what it is. Um, the first things that the TPPB did really was Wilson Street. And, uh, Wilson Street is not constructed yet. I believe it is scheduled for next year, but, uh, I kind of feel like that Wilson Street corridor study was, uh, um, perhaps a little bit changed in the way the city did things and that, uh, multiple, multiple alternatives were looked at. You know, we started with what are the objectives of the project? What are alternatives? Uh, there were some hiccups with that, but I think the overall end, um, is producing a, will produce a, a pretty nice project, both on Wilson Street and Broome Street. I think, uh, a lot of the things that were done on Wilson Street, uh, happened again on, um, on other streets as we've gone through, um, the last four years. So that's the only project per se that I put on this chart. Um, um, you guys are seeing a schedule, is that correct? Okay, yeah. So, um, um, the, the next thing that was really tasked to the TPPB was the Bus Rapid Transit Project. And, uh, you know, the Bus Rapid Transit Project had been, I'm going to say, in and out of, uh, city commissions and NPO commissions since two thousand and thirteen. And the TPPB really kind of grabbed it at the very beginning of two thousand and nineteen and, uh, wrestled with it, got a locally preferred alternative. Um, and then that allowed us to submit a small starts application. Um, and, um, I don't want to diminish, um, that, that was actually a, a pretty big thing. Because if you remember, we had, um, you know, six or seven different downtown routing options, right? We had the west-side routing options, where is our western, western terminal? And, uh, many people in the city had strong opinions of that. And, uh, not only that, we had to figure out what are the city's funding options? Can this possibly be, be done? How much would this project cost? How much would we put it, I, in, uh, the capital budget to get this going? And, um, the TPPB was the lead committee for that. And that, that's, you know, pretty significant, I think. Um, just the fact that we could actually submit a small source application. We, you know, the city had been talking about submitting, um, a small starts and new starts application for literally probably twenty years. And we actually got it done through the work of this committee, of this board. Um, then ex, how, in May, May twenty-eighth of, um, May twenty-eighth of, um, twenty-twenty-one, which is actually my birthday, uh, we got noticed that we have a funding recommendation from FTA. And so that was a, a huge, uh, huge accomplishment. Not only did we submit our application, um, have a locally preferred alternative, but then FTA actually recommended us for funding. Um, uh, we still have some hiccups because you can see during these colored months or colored seasons, right? Those are during the, the COVID period. And so, uh, we still had to deal with a fair amount of controversy, particularly on State Street. Uh, we had to finish our environmental document. And then, um, uh, then we were working on the, the design. And so the design is not a small thing either. It's a basically a hundred and ninety million dollar project, uh, seventy-two million dollars of that has to do with buses. So that means, you know, the remaining hundred and ten, hundred and twenty million dollars is physical improvements. Um, that's a lot of physical improvements. Um, our first, um, our first, uh, bid package, we received bids last Thursday. And, uh, that will go to council, I believe, um, October fourth for approval. Um, that's just, that's just huge. I'm just going to say that, that is just huge. You know, twenty years of marking time and rapid transit and you know, if that's all that happened from the board's efforts, that is a huge, huge accomplishment. Um, so I'm, you know, I just, whoa. Um, um, if we move on, um, one thing that, uh, has really confounded the, the city, um, for at least a decade, uh, I think there was a, a report in two thousand and eight that said that Metro could not expand because they did not have the capacity to store buses. And that was a key issue for, um, BRT as well. Uh, we had submitted on two, uh, back then they were called Tiger Grants, uh, where we were trying to obtain funding, trying to obtain funding, uh, to build, um, a new bus barn or a satellite bus barn, and they both failed. Um, early in two thousand and nineteen, we did an analysis on whether or not we should stay at, um, at the East Washington facility, whether we should relocate. Um, we basically, um, moved forward with Oscar Meyer, completed an environmental assessment and also got nine million dollars of fifty-three thirty-nine B funding for purchase of the Oscar Meyer site. Um, now, there was complications, um, in the negotiations. And so, um, there was actually really a relatively quick pivot, pivot uh, due to the, um, complications in the negotiations. And we moved them to the Hanson Road site. Uh, we had a letter of intent in the winter of twenty-one, so, um, and then the purchase occurred in the summer of twenty-one. So that's a, you know, that was a, an item that really Metro had been pursuing for, um, ten years. Uh, it hindered. Uh, it hindered the ability to expand service and it, it occurred, you know, through the efforts of, of the TPPB. That Hanson Road site, you know, we're, we'll be getting forty-three um, buses for the BRT. And we would not have room to store them at the East Washington site. They will all be stored at the Hanson Road site. So it enables us to implement Bus Rapid Transit. We start with Vision Zero. I, I, I remember early, oftentimes what happens is we kind of introduce a concept and we uh, introduce Vision Zero concept, I, I think in 2019, where we compared our traffic uh, crashes and fatalities with homicides and batteries and thefts in the city of Madison and said that, you know, uh, we have as much problem um, on our roads as we do with crime. And so that led to uh, the city of Madison moving forward with Vision Zero. There had been reticence, I think, you know, within traffic engineering to, to think about Vision Zero prior to the uh, creation of the board. The board helped guide the, the action plan, uh, which was approved in fall of 21. Um, and then that actually allowed us to um, submit our Safe Streets for All Grant application. Um, that was just submitted, I believe it was Thursday, the same day that we got bids for the BRT. Um, we're hopeful that our, our twenty million dollar grant request is successful. But the only reason we were even able to apply is because we had the action plan uh, completed. We're the only Vision Zero city in the city, uh, in the state of Wisconsin. And then on a, on a parallel path, you know, Tom Wilson and Alder Foster, along with members of the TC, worked on the Safe Streets Madison uh, program, which is, uh, I'm not going to say it's the same as the Vision Zero or Safe Streets for All. Uh, but I'm going to say it incorporated the, um, the same value system, kind of, of um, really prioritizing roadway safety rather than other things. Uh, this is a, an item that I'm just going to say that uh, uh, has not gone as well as I had hoped. And I'll, I'll take some responsibility for it. You know, early when uh, the board had start, started in the, the Board of Transportation started, uh, we wanted to deal with on-street parking and um, and we, the MOPES acronym kind of was there as Madison Ordinance of on-street parking changes. I, I can't even remember what the acronym stands for right now. I, I need to review that. In the midst of that, we ended up somewhat pivoting to transportation demand management. Okay, and um, uh, so I'm going to say that has been successful and we're likely to introduce uh, the TDM wardens uh, probably, um, probably in, in the early October council meeting. Um, so the TDM program, which is a pretty major accomplishment. It took, you know, LA just introduced theirs, Denver just uh, finished theirs. It's a pretty major accomplishment. So this is uh, it's not done yet. We're still working with developers. There will be plenty of testimony regarding this. Um, that's a huge accomplishment, but um, the on-street parking issue still remain and they still need to be addressed. The complete streets, uh, you know, that concept was kind of introduced in 2019, uh, where we talked about uh, how other cities uh, such as Chicago had uh, street typologies and complete streets, uh, programs, manuals, uh, similar like with um, Minneapolis. And that led to us having a, a capital budget request for complete streets program and we enlisted Tool. Uh, we hope that we'll be able to introduce that this fall as well. That will occur probably after the TDM ordinance is, is introduced. And this will change the way uh, we reconstruct streets and also how developers build streets. And we hope that um, we hope it will provide a foundation that makes approval and expectations more consistent and, and perhaps easier. The Transit Network redesign. And I mean, the board, the board sat through, Tom, was it two or three hours of testimony?
What was the number? I think it was closer to three.
Three, yeah.
It was a very, yeah, we went in, I think, eleven, almost midnight, I think, that night.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the last time the, the Transit Network was redesigned was nineteen ninety-eight. Right? This happens like once every 20 years. And that, so that was, that's huge. That, that is actually really a huge accomplishment. Now, we still have, there's still work to do on the Transportation Commission. Sorry, but this is, this is something that happens like once every 20 years. You know, um. Wow, you know, I'm just going to say, wow, okay. So these are um, these are bars, they're hatched. And the reason why they're hatched is because um, transferred, the Department of Transportation is not necessarily a lead on them. We're working with other departments or divisions on them, but they're still a key part of the, the board's work. One is on the Transportation Improvement Program, which you saw a presentation on last year on how rather than just using pavement condition um, to prioritize our capital street projects, can we incorporate more items? The Transit Oriented Development, um, you know, the Planning Division and Plan Commission is lead. But that, that's all focused based on the Transit Network redesign and the Bus Rapid Transit, right? And then we have the Assessment Policy, which you just saw. And let me just see, um. And then um, we have the inner-city bus terminal where there was quite a bit of work from the TPPB um, early to move it from Langdon to Lake Street by Gordon Commons. And now we are in the midst of uh, quite a bit of negotiations with a developer to have a you know, an indoor inner-city bus terminal. So when you look at four years and, and if you look at, at big rocks, I want to say these are pretty big rocks. You know, these are more has happened here. The board has accomplished more here than you know, I want to respect all the previous transportation commit, committees or whatever. But this is a big deal. This is a big deal. Bus Rapid Transit, a satellite facility, Vision Zero, Complete Green Streets, a Transportation Demand Management ordinance, and an inner-city bus terminal. You know, these are big things that I feel like um, you know, sometimes we, we, we sit through these meetings and does it even matter? And I'm going to say, I've been in Madison for thirty years. This is transformative. What the board has done is transformative. When we look at them, when we look at next year, okay? Many of these things are, I'm going to say um, in implementation, right? And so the, the ordinance really puts implementation i- in the hands of, of the Transportation Commission, right? And so um, the things that the, that the uh, TPPB has worked on, you know, have now worked beyond the policy and planning and now our implementation. And so that includes the East-West Bus Rapid Transit, the Safe Streets for All projects, the Transit Network redesign, uh, TDM implementation, and the inner-city bus terminal. Okay. However, you know, um, uh, we, you know, we, we now have the uh, North-South Bus Rapid Transit. And we want to uh, move forward with that so that we can take advantage of the monies that are available in the next four years from, from the bill. And so, you know, all the, the battles that we had with um, the downtown routing, you know, of the bus, East-West Bus Rapid Transit and the West Transfer Point and all that. Well, uh, you know, we, now we can look forward to kind of the new challenges. Uh, I think there's likely to still be a little bit of spillover of, of Complete Green Streets. Uh, on-street parking and curb management, that is something that we need to go back and revisit. I would like to have a parking manager in place before we do that because it's, it's not a simple thing. Uh, I do, I think Phil Gritzmacher will be very helpful and we can draw on his skills to help us with that. And then um, Amtrak and then um, will be a huge uh, thing. I think the mayor and judging from um, the Finance Committee meetings, many Alders are very interested in, in attracting passenger rail to the city. And so we do, just last week, we had, had our contract signed with HNTB to locate a station. But beyond locating a station, we need to try and get service to Madison into the FRA's corridor identification program. And so that will be kind of the, the focus right after we figure out where it would be a good location for the um, city. So there we, there we go. So um, that's kind of what the board will likely be working on as we look ahead. I'll um, I'll move on to how that relates to the DOT uh, work program. Um, but I want to just pause right here and see if there's any questions or if there's any discussion. Okay, I guess there's.
I don't see any hands raised, go ahead, Tom.
Okay. So uh, this is our work plan that I showed. Early in the year, uh, Hanson Road is on track. The Transit Network redesign is on track. The, I should just maybe just state that the the, the words that are in red are perhaps a little bit more detailed idea of what we, we want to accomplish. Uh, the BRT is on track. Vision Zero is on track. The Complete Green Streets is on track. Bias Training is on track. Um, the Amtrak Study is um, in yellow. That means it's, it's starting a little bit later than we had hoped. You know, uh, we had those funds available to us January 1st. It took us a little bit of time. We were able to put the RFP out, but negotiating the contract took a little bit more time and getting it approved took a little bit more time than um, we would have liked. I, I think the TDM ordinance is on track. The um, the eleven oh one uh, remodeling is on track. And that's something that uh, you don't see too much of in this here, but it, it is a, a fair amount of improvements. It's twenty million dollars worth of improvements to eleven oh one where our buses. And so it's, it's not an insignificant amount. Uh, Fair Collections on track, Technology's on on track. The Slow Streets, um, we had intended to perhaps do some slow streets like we had uh, during the heart of the COVID pandemic. And um, we just had to put that a hole. We just didn't have the bandwidth to do that. The tip prioritization process is somewhat on track. The monthly permit software is not on track. We, we haven't been able to move forward with that because we were lacking a parking manager. Uh, the I-94 interchange study is actually being assumed by WISDOT. They've decided that it will be part of their study rather than us doing it. And then the State Street Campus Inner-City Bus Terminal is on track. Uh, operational improvements um, is on track for Justin and Metro Transit. They have ten million dollars to essentially implement the, the Transit Network redesign. Uh, organizational change within um, Metro. Justin has been moving forward with that. Um, the LED conversion project is um, perhaps I'm going to say lagging a little bit because um, we just lack our um, enough electricians to get everything done that we need to get done. Uh, we've lost a couple of electricians and we haven't been able to fully recruit. The Safe Streets for All Grant application was on track and got submitted. Um, the PEO uh, transition is moving forward. And then the On-Street Parking Study, um, that's, as I mentioned, on hold. Um, Assessment Changes uh, is on track. PCI compliance is something that uh, uh, the board may not be aware of, but I guess um, we have been bumped into a new category as far as um, reporting requirements for credit card transactions because largely because of our parking utility. Everyone, every time someone goes into our parking utility, they use a credit card. And um, so our reporting uh, requirements are, are much higher, much greater. And so um, I think there's like forty-eight different steps that we have to move forward. And uh, we are moving forward with that, but um, it's going to we're doing what we can. It's a, it was all of a sudden, we were informed of, of it and we, we kind of went, whoa, you know? Uh, we have, we have some work to do. Uh, so that's that. Any um, questions or comments?
No, okay. Doesn't look like it.
I think that's that for that, that agenda, I know.
Okay, um, before we move on to the next one, Tom, you know, you gave this board, this board credit. And yes, certainly, you know, we've all been to meetings and everything and you know, some of us are here and don't, don't get paid anything for this. But I don't think that the, the, uh, the effort that you and your staff have put into all of these projects can be overstated. And it's, it's very clear to at least me and I'm sure everyone else here that you and your staff, when you're working on this stuff, it's not just a job to you. You actually care about the outcome. You care about the city of Madison. You want to do the right thing. That is reflected in all of these projects and I think is a is critical to, to their success and why they're successful. So um, I'll just want to extend my, my thank you to you and to all of your staff. And, and really happy that you're all here and that we have you, you know. I said it to a number of folks throughout the city and friends of mine who talk about transportation stuff. That we really do kind of have a, a dream team of, of people that work well on, on this stuff and really care. So, so thank you, thank you to all of your staff.
Yeah, well, thank you. It's um, yeah, it's, it's fun. Isn't it fun to see? Stuff is happening, stuff is happening.
That, that, um, those images were great. It, it's, it's one thing to sort of, you know, be here and, you know, work on individual ones. But seeing that, that whole thing, like wow, you know, we, and when I say we, I'm including everyone, you know, that has worked on this stuff. Really, yeah, it's impressive and I'm, I'm really excited for where we go next. Um, Alder Furman, go ahead.
I know, I'm not going to spend too much time repeating everything Tom said, but co-signed. Um, I do think um, it really, we really struggle. Uh, I, I know I really struggle a lot of times um, with, with meetings and how much stuff is going on. And to see um, to see that progress and to see all that work that um, uh, staff has done and that um, you know, you've gotten feedback and, and assistance from us on is, is really awesome. So thank you for sharing that with us. Um, thank you for all the work that you and your staff does. Thank you.
Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Well, I'm going to pile on to um, I have been involved in transportation advocacy in Madison for um, a, a, a bit of time. And I would say since the work of the Transportation Ordinance uh, Rewrite Committee and sort of restructuring, um, hiring of you, Tom. Um, I've just been really, really impressed by the trajectory. And it is, I'm, I, I actually tell people this pretty frequently. It's just a whole different world than where, where we were at even five years ago. Um, so definitely hats off to you and your team. And uh, let's keep going at the same pace because um, there's a lot of work to do and it's really exciting to be part of it. So thank you.
Yeah, good, thank you. I'll share that with, see, I think we have a staff meeting tomorrow morning, so I'll share, share that. I could actually share that slide at the staff meeting tomorrow. That would be a good slide.
It's a good slide.
Yeah, so, good.
All right. Um, with no additional hands raised, we'll move on to the last item of the evening then, Legista 73645. With no additional hands raised, we'll move on to the last item of the evening, then Legistar 73646, our director's report.
Yeah, so as I, as I mentioned, where BRT early works was bid, came in about you know, 10 or 13% above budget, but I guess we're kind of expecting that our prices are going to be a little bit higher. It's a smaller project. We're hoping to bid the main package in, in mid-November. The plan set has over 1,000 pages, and so it's, it's a very large package. It's projected to be between 50 and 60 million dollars. So it's, it's something. We're trying to figure out how to do that. We would like to get it on the street so that it's the Wisconsin DOT will also be bidding many, many projects, and so we'd like to get in before they do, you know, and, and get bids before contractors are tied up with their work rather than our work. So we'll see how that works. The negotiations with the, with two parking manager candidates failed. And if, I don't think I'm gonna go into the details. If you want to know some more details, you can ask me offline. I'm just gonna say that that's very discouraging. I I think a lot of us are doing a lot more parking stuff without a parking manager, and it'd be nice to have that slots filled. So I think we're gonna have to re-advertise it and re-recruit. So that's, that's disappointing. We're continuing to work. Yes, yes, Alder Furman?
I'm, I'm, Tommy, I assume you're okay with me showing up in? Tom Lynch, I, I thought I saw, so I assume, you're not getting too much detail, but I assume when you say it was failed, there was an offer for somebody that I thought I saw to show up in Legistar. I guess that was pulled. So, so we got far, but then it sort of broke apart at the end, is without, again, without getting into too much detail?
Yeah, yeah, our first candidate was all set to go into Legistar, and then that person pulled out, and then we negotiated with another one, and then literally on the, I almost think it was on the Monday before the council meeting, where it was to be introduced, the person pulled out.
Thank you. That's very disappointing, but I appreciate that additional information.
Yeah. So I can, if you want to offline, I can talk more about the details, but in some ways, it's water under the bridge, and we just need to move on. We're continuing to work with stakeholders on the State Street Campus Garage and Intercity Bus Terminal, and it, it seems as though there doesn't seem to be as much I don't know how to say this. The reduction in parking stalls does not seem to be an issue. There is some concern over traffic on Hawthorne Court. That seems to be where many of the concerns are right now. Federal funding. Yang was able to get his grant application in. Chris Pedakowski was also able to get in a, a grant application for bridges for John Nolan Drive. We have two grant applications due October 4th and 13th. And I'm just gonna be honest, it's gonna be very, it's, it's gonna be tight to get them in. We're gonna try, but it's you know, we just, you think about all the things that are swirling right now between the State Street Campus Garage and the BRT bid packages, but we're doing what we can. The Wisconsin DOT projects, they are starting to heat up. Wisconsin DOT has three different consultant teams working on I-39, North Stoughton Road, and then South Stoughton Road. Right now, they're in the, the data collection phases, so much of the information is mostly a purpose and need types of, of information. We're starting the project here at the limits. However, when they get into the Alternates Development Phase, which will occur late fall and then early next year, it will go relatively quickly. When I go into those meetings, you know, I go into a meeting, I see 20 engineers, you know, and they're all working on this full-time, and so I believe that those, while it's not going fast now, it will be going quite quickly. Amtrak, the consultant contract was signed September 15th. We'd like to have maybe a kickoff public meeting in mid-November. And then the TDM ordinance, we, you know, we continue to work with stakeholders on that, and I'm, I'm gonna say that, I don't know what I wanna say. You know, developers have many comments, and we, we want to remain true to, we want mode shift. But a lot of times, the developers' comments reveal little holes or maybe things that are not covered in the TDM, and so I'm gonna say that the interaction with, with the business community has been good and helped us to consider things that we didn't consider, and so we're just kind of filling in some of the holes in the program based on their comments. And so that's, that's the end of the director's report.
Thanks, Tom. Any other questions, comments, or considerations, concerns, feedback? If not, looks like a bit short of a meeting today. I'd look for motions to adjourn, or a motion, well, any one. Thank you, Alder Furman. Is there a second? Thanks, Carolyn. All right, all those in favor of joining the meeting for this evening, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Those know, here's to be unanimous. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a pleasant evening. See you next time.